Good evening. Welcome to the Lewiston City Council Meeting of July 14, 2014. We'll call this meeting to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilor Maldonado.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business is citizen comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Do we have any city or citizen comments? Name and address for the record, ma'am.
Deanne Scraybeck, 512 24th Street North. Members of the Lewiston City Council and audience, thank you for providing an opportunity to speak concerning the Urban Renewal Agency which is in its third reading. Recently, the complex issue of the URA caught my attention. The majority of Nesburst County residents do not understand the intricacies of the agency, and since I reside in Area 1, I take issue with the waterline project in North Lewiston which was completed last year and it remains open. Yes, the project serves a purpose, and it will help to promote light industry in the area for future plans. When I was asked at a recent URA meeting why the project hadn't been closed, the answer was, "We might want to do other projects in or near the port, like 18th or 20th Street North and/or Harry Wall Development." That didn't make sense to me. According to the Lewiston, City of Lewiston URA Plan, Page 2, it states, "Other cities in Idaho recognize the benefits of an active URA as a successful tool for economic development." Lewiston has chosen to activate its URA for that reason. The duration of the plan and the agency is to August 2021, '29, or until the bonds have been paid off, whichever comes first. Since the bonds have been paid off in Areas 1 and 2, why haven't they been closed? This issue has huge financial implications. If Area 1 and 2 were closed, both the city and county would have extra money in their budgets to spend for critical needs. They would be able to, they conceivably could raise property taxes 3%, and the levy rate would still go down. The dollar value of new properties we are discussing is in the neighborhood of $61 million. That is a significant amount of money to spread around. In reviewing the Idaho Code, it states that revenues generated within the URA must be spent on the area, on eligible projects, and not to be used by local taxing jurisdictions in their general budgets. Now, what does that mean? Does that mean city street improvements? Streets in the western portion of North Lewiston that the trucks have torn up, putting in water and sewer in hopes that build it and they will come? That is a question for brighter minds than mine. I've written to you in detail concerning Idaho law, and I urge the members of the audience to look at Page 733 of the Local Economic Development Act which states, "When the principal of an interest on such monies indebtedness and bonds are paid in full," it will be closed. It's as plain as day. In my humble opinion, the URA has had a free rein since its inception, and it's time to take a closer look. Yes, they've done some excellent work. However, in URA meetings, I've heard it said that the city council was attempting to micromanage the URA. It is a reality that most city governments are staff-driven, but what does that make you? Hmm, that's something to think about. You have been elected to represent the citizens of the city of Lewiston and to be fiscally responsible. What you're being asked to approve, in part, is illegal. Remember, closure of Area 1 would have a positive financial impact on Nesburst County, the city of Lewiston, and property owners. Let's do the right thing and restore some of the trust that has been lacking in recent years. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Josie McDonald, 2611 4000 North Lewiston. In the essence of interest of saving time here tonight, I wish to go on the record as supporting Deanne's statements that was made in regards to the URA. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gentlemen, ladies, I was invited here tonight by Ms...
Name and address for the record.
Tiger Baugh, office at 1341 15th Street in Clarkston.
Okay.
Now, I'm not sure exactly what I have to say has to do with Lewiston, except we do have a business here in the valley. Most of you know me as the auctioneer, Tiger Auctioneering. We do all the auctions for Idaho State Department of Transportation, Idaho Fish and Game, and the Idaho Department of Corrections. And we do more auctions, bigger auctions than anybody in the area. However, I'm not here tonight to talk to you about that. I've been involved with a food company for the last 20 years. We're located in Clarkston. And we've been working Washington State Department of Economic Development, Valley Vision here also is helping us along on some things. We have a lot of potential. We did something very unorthodox and desperate, you might say, three years ago. We sponsored a NASCAR race team right out of the valley here. Our car came in 13th two weeks ago in Daytona, on the lead lap, ahead of the Monster 54 car, by the way, which we compete with. We have a lot of people in the valley that are involved with us. People are involved in my company trying to move this along. We're in the process of creating a national infomercial. We're about to finish that off right now. Terry Cornelison, who works with the Washington State Department of Economic Development, has said that we have the potential of being the second or third or largest employer in the valley here in the next five years if we don't get bought out. The reality is that will probably happen, and I know, Ms. Jackie, you did not want me discussing that, but I want to bring right up front here that that's just the reality that we're looking at. Our product was evaluated by Promo Depot. That's the marketing and evaluation agency of Acosta. And for those of you that don't know who Acosta is, they're the largest food distributor in the world. They supply Krogers, Fred Meyers, Walgreens, Publix, Winn-Dixie, Winco, Costco, Walmart, Sam's Club, and so forth. Every 25 cents, every dollar that's spent in America, they get 25 cents. In other words, they get 25 cents of every dollar spent on food bought in the United States. Their product and evaluation arm is called Promo Depot. And they spent the day with us at the racetrack as our guest two years ago in Miami, the last race of the season. They told us that was the first time they'd ever left their office in Jacksonville to solicit a new vendor, and they compared us to Vitamin Water. Well, that's a pretty tall goal to reach, but our marketing director and charge of product development nationwide is Aida Aragon. You can just Google that, Aida Aragon, and you'll see what she does and what she looks like. She took a product, she's taken several products nationwide. She started with a company called Muscle Milk about nine years ago when they were smaller than we are now. Last week, they sold out, they sold out to Hormel for 450 million. Now, we believe that's the same track that we're headed down. We're already into some national retailers like Vitamin World. We're looking at Vitamin Shop. Publix will take us as soon as we're ready. That's one of the 10 top food distributors in the United States. We're looking at Whole Foods and other places, but the infomercial is really what will put us on the map. We've got a production company involved in that, been working with us for a year. They've done four Super Bowl halftime shows and filmed events in 60 countries throughout the world, so we've got professional people working on that. It's going to bring a lot of attention, notoriety, to the valley here. We already get quite a bit, just for being one of the only teams west of the Mississippi to sponsor a NASCAR race team. But when I was approached a week ago about this, I asked, "Well, you know, we've been on the TV a couple of times, been on the radio. I have a radio show Friday morning on KRLC, and I talk about our race team sometimes there." I kind of ask, you know, why it took so long to find us if you're involved in something called the Food Processing Center, and that's what I'm here to talk about or just to make a reference to.
Please, sir, if you could summarize why you're here.
Ms. Jackie said that you were interested in putting in a food facility to do co-packing or as a food facility and have a kitchen facility here in Lewiston. We already take a lot of our business out of the valley to Salt Lake and other places as a co-packer. Once the infomercial is up and going, we're either going to process the food here, package it here. We already have an FDA-approved facility in Clarkston, and we're going to do as much as we can here locally, but if we can't handle it here locally, then we'll take it to someplace that has the equipment. Doesn't take a lot of equipment. I brought along some things, some ideas here from packaging and whatnot. If you're interested in questions later, I can do that, but it just seemed like a good idea. If you want to put in a food processing facility that has the equipment that we need to do what we need, we'd be happy to use it, help pay for it, give them business as long as you're competitive, and we might as well have the business here in the valley to create jobs rather than taking them to Salt Lake City. It's kind of, it's kind of up to you folks.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
My name is Arvid Lyons. I live in Clarkston at 2333 Fifth Avenue, but I'm going to speak to the 18th Street in Port of Lewiston. Right now, at the terminal, we handle about 20,000 trucks a year. A third of that comes from the lower elevations, Tammany, from families like Whitman, Kaufman, Dyson, Scott. Those families are all harvesting now. The start of that street from 3rd Avenue heading north is a nice four-lane asphalt. After about 100 feet, it turns to a two-lane, ground-up asphalt, and it goes to two lanes, dirt on both sides, to 6th Avenue. On the north side of 6th Avenue, it's 100% degraded with potholes. Unless you have a two-wheeler, you can't avoid the potholes. And so, I'm talking on behalf of the URA suggestion to get that elevated in one of the streets that need work, on behalf of the growers and the customers that come into our facility at the Lewis-Claire Terminal in Port of Lewiston. Thank you.
Thank you, Arvid.
David Doransfeld, manager of Port of Lewiston. And I'd like to thank the council and the URA board and staff for their hard work in developing the URA plan. We've had a thoughtful discussion, and I appreciate the diverse viewpoints. I have a couple points I hope you will consider concerning the future of the current revenue allocation areas. First, we are not talking about a failed government program. All three of the revenue allocation areas have been very successful. The URA has allowed the city, county, and port to work together to focus resources and assist business development. My greatest concern is that potential URA projects are being too narrowly defined. I believe the URA has identified eight potential projects. My question is, what happens in two years from now when a business is looking to locate in Lewiston and potentially create, say, 60 jobs, but we, local government, need to construct needed infrastructure improvements to make the project happen? Where will the money come from? I expect scarcity of resources will be just as difficult two years down the road, maybe they'll be worse. Existing revenue allocation areas provide a tool to construct needed infrastructure improvements which facilitate business development. As I have emphasized in past meetings, you cannot have economic development without infrastructure development, period. The port has identified improvements to North Lewiston city streets and infrastructure improvements for an expanded industrial park as possible future URA projects. The current revenue allocation areas provide the city, county, and port the opportunity to continue to partner together to create jobs in Nesburst County. Now, just yesterday, I saw an advertisement on TV inviting businesses to locate in New York State with the promise of no property taxes, no sales taxes, and no income taxes for a period of 10 years. Now, while I'm not, while I do not believe in these types of tax abatements, this is an example of what Lewiston is competing against on a national basis. So I ask you to look to Lewiston's future and leave a business development tool in place that is working, that is increasing property tax base, and is creating jobs. Please leave the current revenue allocation areas in place and do not restrict future URA projects to only eight possible projects. If we start to focus this down too narrow to just eight possible projects, I think you'll see us back, us being local governmental entities, back up here in a short period of time, because there will be a project that will come down the road out of left field that will need improvements and what mechanism, what tool we have to facilitate that development. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Not just warm outside, a little warm in here, too. My name's Barbara Leachman. I live at 1512 Alder Drive here in Lewiston, Idaho, and I work here on campus at the Small Business Development Center. I've been part of the committee, along with Terry Cornelison and a number of other people. He's with the Small Business Development Center at WSU, to try and get a food processing incubator here in the valley for our food-related entrepreneurs and for our agricultural-related endeavors that could benefit from such an incubator. It would help both existing and, it could help both existing and prospective small businesses here in the valley. Commercial food processing equipment is a big investment, and it is beyond the means of many producers and processors and retailers of food products that are, hopefully could be developed here in the valley or could more efficiently be processed. It's beyond the means of most startups and even existing businesses, and the incubator model that's been developed with shared resources would remove that barrier and help develop businesses and jobs and profits here in the valley. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Lynda Bentley, and I'm representing property at 1511 Grell. I was born in Lewiston, and I grew up here, attended high school, and went to LCSC. My parents passed away about 20 years ago, and I pay property taxes on the house that's located at 1511 Grell. My son and his school-aged children currently live there. My remarks are about the Gun Club project, and I am concerned about that because years ago, when I used to work at Twin City Foods, I rode my bicycle back and forth from 14th Street close to the 1511 Grell address. And Gun Club Road and Lindsay Creek Road have always been very narrow, and I was very careful to ride right, you know, three inches from the edge of the pavement. You may have more information than I have about the project because I only heard about it by reading the newspaper. But in the newspaper, it said that it was one foot wider than necessary, and I would like to take issue with that. I measured both Lindsay Creek and Gun Club Road, and for one lane, each of them were 12 feet wide. I measured some other roads in the area, and Stewart Avenue at the top of Gun Club Road, for one lane, was 19 feet wide. In other words, 14 feet wider than Gun Club Road. And Grell, close to where I live, was 17 feet wide for one lane. And so, my concerns for this are that for people who might be walking or riding their bicycles on this road, I'm concerned that the road probably needs to be widened and traffic lights put in, and I'd also advise that a turning lane be put in. It's fairly heavily used now because it is kind of a shortcut. I use it probably at least twice a week myself. My grandson's recently rode from downtown Lewiston up 17th Street and up the steep hill to 5th Street in the Lewiston orchards. So it's very conceivable that they would also be using the Gun Club Road, and it's just very, very narrow. With ECO moving to that area by the livestock area, I think there would be even more increased traffic if 11th Avenue, 16th Avenue, and I think it's Nesburst Drive by Home Depot all dropped into the Gun Club Road. I'm not really opposed to the development. It's just that I feel for safety sake, it needs more consideration than the road is able to handle at this time. So thank you for allowing me to address my concerns to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Bob Tippett, 4018 Fairway Drive. Mr. Mayor, I'm wearing two hats here tonight. One is a citizen, but I was also asked to come down here and speak representing the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Is that for the next item on the agenda, or is that now? So I'm a little confused because...
This is the time and place.
Okay. Well, the first thing I wanted to talk about is the incubator they've been talking about here tonight. I didn't catch the gentleman's name. I'm sorry about that. But I've been concerned about the amount of money we're talking about. We're talking about investing public money into a public organization. URA's purpose is to create jobs, to create wealth, and that's wealth is tax organization or property taxes. If it's a publicly-owned incubator, it's not going to create any taxes. All the facilities, everything in it, publicly-owned, not going to create taxes. Very few jobs unless somebody can put together manufacturing or an organization to handle this gentleman's concerns. That is totally something different. But anyway, I understood and was told there was a study done for Latah County regarding incubators, food incubators. So I contacted Jim Toomey, who is the Director of Business Incubation, College of Life Sciences, University of Idaho, located in Caldwell. He's the largest incubator in the state, very successful incubator. Jim told me that if you want to do an incubator, you should have a population of 500,000 people nearby, because 90% of their revenues that go into that incubator come from large companies, large companies that spend money for research and development and use the incubator facilities for their R&amp;D work, but the revenue comes in. If they were just trying to survive on the 10%, they couldn't do that. He also suggested that if we want to do it or go forward with this, that we do a feasibility study, just like Latah County did. Interestingly enough, I better backstep a second. He mentioned also to operate an incubator like that. You put in a pasteurizing machine, $56,000 for that machine. When you have a machine you're spending that kind of money on, you bring in staff and you hire staff to operate it. So an incubator just isn't going to be a building and equipment, it's also going to be staff. Port staff or city staff, I don't know, but it's going to be staff, so additional money. It might be a job, but it's a government job. But he told me that they get $25 an hour for the use of their incubators from the private sector. And he also recommended a feasibility study, but he sent a letter, or rather, an email off to Chris Mayhem of Mayhem Solutions, who did the study for Latah County. And they finalized that study on the 13th, or rather, February of 2013. And that study basically said, "This area is not equipped to handle the cost or the needs of an incubator that they're talking about," or for a food incubator. And he also, I've been told that that study is for Moscow, Latah County, doesn't pertain to Lewiston. In his email back, this is coming from Chris, "Our firm did the Latah County study, which included the Lewiston area, and there's a link to the incubator if somebody wants to contact it or take a look at that study and find out what they had to say." So I'm suggesting you take a good, strong look whether or not we want to spend $2 million. And if I throw out the $2 million, because I recall it's $1.4 million for a building and $600,000 for the equipment to go in that building, so I would object to that. Now, Mr. Mayor, I do want to do a report for the Metropolitan Planning Organization. You want me to do that now? I have to go back to my seat and get that.
Okay. We'll listen to Mr. Matoon.
Are we allowed comments after the presentation since there'll be new information?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
Mr. Matoon.
Okay. Thank you.
Name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Doug Matoon, Executive Director of Valley Vision, 111 Main Street, Lewiston. I just wanted to go on record, speaking in favor of your URA ordinance that you're considering later on this evening. It's important to us from the economic development perspective that we continue the success of building the public infrastructure for the companies that we are trying to grow here, that are currently here, and new companies we're attempting to recruit. We have to have the transportation capacity, the water capacity, the sewer capacity, along with the energy and communications utilities that go with those projects in order for us to attract companies. So I urge you to continue the success that the URA has shown us in the past. Also want to correct kind of maybe a misnomer out there with some folks that this is somehow a government giveaway to those companies that are taking advantage of it. In fact, those companies' taxes are what pay for the cost of doing those infrastructure projects. So I encourage you to continue supporting that so that we can continue to grow our companies and attract new companies to the valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Bob Tippett, 4018 Fairway Drive. I'm the chairman of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, representing, because I'm chairman of the Nesburst County Commission, and I'm here representing the NPO tonight regarding the Nesburst Drive punch through. They've asked me to discuss that or where it stands when it comes to the planning of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Now, we just finished and adopted the Valley Destination Plan for 2040, the Long Range Transportation Plan. If anybody hasn't had a chance to read it, we can get you copies and you can read through that plan. What I want to say, or take a couple of minutes if I might, just to validate the plan if I can. This plan came in four phases. It started a little over two years ago. Phase one addressed issues and values, assessing historic growth and values of the valley. Now, the Metropolitan Organization, I should stress, is made up of Sooton County, Clarkston, Nesburst County, Lewiston, the state of Idaho, and the state of Washington. It's a required organization if you're larger than 50,000 people and you're spending federal money on projects. So this is a requirement of federal government to get federal money to do projects. So they do area transportation. As I mentioned, phase one was issues and values assessing historic growth, transportation systems growth, travel patterns, auto congestion, transit needs, and bicycles. Phase two was the planned process development, looked at all the different alternatives. How well do they meet the regional goals? Phase three was based on a technical analysis and public comments, development, preferred alternatives, and the final was final approval. The vetting the process, it was fully vetted throughout the community over a two-year period. There were two workshops, one in September of 2012, one in Clarkston, one in Lewiston. The public was invited to all of the workshop, all of the NPO... The public was invited to all of the workshop, all of the MPO meetings, any time there was discussion of this. There were two forums in January of 2013. There was a website set up, there was 120 responses online between October 2012 and February 2013. We had public meetings, the City Council, and at the Clarkston. And then we did final approval and adoption of the plan on September 17th of 2013. Now, in the plan, they categorized and ranked the importance of the different projects in the community, or in the valley. They had Washington one section, Idaho the other section. In the Idaho section, I was asked to present this, I won't show it to you, but as I say, this whole plan is here. Item number 21, that's 21 on the maps, if you look at the maps, but it was the number 12th in priority on all the projects, is Nesburst Drive Extension from Gun Club Road to Nesburst Drive. That was in one of the higher priority projects. It was construct two-lane collector, an estimated value of 1.7 million, from what I hear, that's gone up now. From what I understand, that's probably closer to 4 million. And it said that at that point, we would have spent about $41 million doing the other 11 projects ahead of it. I might point out, 19 in priority was Gun Club Road from Lapre Road to Stewart, a four-lane minor arterial. Now, this lady's concerned about the two lanes, or the width. This report suggests a four-lane road go in there. So the MPO study does support putting that road through, does support, however, expanding that Gun Club Road. I do want to read one other paragraph in this same report. Funding for new roadways. Over the life of the plan, the Lewis-Clark Valley Metropolitan Area will grow and redevelop. As this occurs, there will be need for new roads and improvements to existing roads. In most jurisdictions throughout the United States, developers typically build new roads, excuse me, developers typically build new local streets and collectors at their cost as part of the project approval process, and participate in funding improvements to the arterial street system based on impact. So I want to tell you what the MPO plan that you've seen and has been proved. Any questions you have on that? Thank you.
You bet.
Good evening, council. Doug Havens, Nesburst County Commissioner. My home address, 3513 22nd Street. I'm going to be real brief right now, because I heard the mayor said he'd accept comments after the presentation. So all I wanted to do was hand out a letter on behalf of the county clerk, Patty Weeks, who's out of town, unfortunately for this meeting. She had intended to be here. So I have a few copies, and I thought I'd hand them out now, and then I'll hold my comments and perhaps read this letter later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and public hearings. Item A, Presentation, URA Progress Report. Mr. Bennett, you want to introduce this, or Laura?
I think Mrs. Montersch is going to go ahead and start us off with this.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. What a journey we've been on for the last three weeks. I thought I'd give you kind of a snapshot of what the URA's been doing since we last met. And here we are now, on the eve of doing something historic and good for the community. Urban Renewal Agency has met three times since the June 23rd City Council meeting, and they have refined the list of potential projects from 23 to 8, that in their estimation will promote job growth, improve tax base, and eliminate blight. The agency discussed at length, issued raised at the last council meeting. So for example, we were questioned on the roadwork on 20th Street North, because the existing pavement quality was good. And yes, it is. The improvements that were noted were mostly for safety and freight mobility. But be that as it may, 20th Street has been removed from the priority list in favor of 18th Street. And our Public Works Director has taken the pavement rating schedule and put it into a graphic format that I think is a little bit easier for everybody to understand, if we could kind of key into that picture now. Are we on? No, okay. Well, I'll just let that go, but if you see the red...
It was on.
It was up, okay. I guess I was the only one. All right, there we go. And the colors are not the same on the overhead as they are in the graphics. So on the overhead, the bad roads, in terms of having failed, the pavement quality, very low, and our gravel is that sort of golden color. On the handout that was given to council, it's red. But that is 6th Avenue North, 5th Avenue North, and 18th. The balance of the roads on that map are blue, on the overhead map are blue, are rated fair. So they weren't considered for improvement. So again, 20th North came off of the priority list because of pavement quality, and 18th Street North was retained. Additional narrative was added to the plan summary to focus on these eight priority projects. The agency funding of the Nesburst Drive Extension has passed legal muster, and the offer is subject to a number of conditions, including a timetable for performance. The landowners have indicated their willingness to sign a letter of intent stipulating to these terms. I believe the letter was circulated to the City Council earlier today. I was intending to show the prioritization from the Long Range Transportation Plan, because Councilman Collins had asked me about it today, but as covered by Mr. Tippett, the project for all projects on the Idaho side of our urban community, of all the projects considered over 20 years, the Nesburst Drive Extension ranks 12th. We reissued the plan as a convenience to council in the Binders tab, trying to make it easier for you to find things by subject and by area. So I think in short, the URA has done everything requested of them by the City Council. We've invested a lot of resources to get to this point, including time and effort by dedicated persons, whose goal is the betterment of this community. Next, I would invite Joanne Kohl Hansen up to discuss the project evaluation tool, and I will return after hearing from her, Mr. Hewlett, both members of the board, to answer any questions you may have. As Laura mentioned, I'm Joanne Kohl Hansen. I'm the member at large, one of two members of at large of the Urban Renewal Agency. And as a member at large, I don't represent the interests specifically of the city, the county, or the port. I represent all of the patrons, the taxpayers of this area. Furthermore, I live in the orchards, and I work in the orchards. All three areas of impact are not in the orchards. They're down outside of the orchard's area. But I support the efforts made to reinvest in our community, and I support them because they strategically plan for development. The areas of impact are strategic plans of development areas. They can add to the wealth of our economy through the URA. But I also understand, and the URA understands, that money could be spent on projects that may not be URA-worthy. A lot of discussion has occurred at the URA meetings of what projects should be on the list or not on the list. We took a step back and said, really, what makes a project URA-worthy? And then we took the time to develop this evaluation tool. I don't know if you can see that, but it's page two in your packet. The rows are the shortlist of projects. But what I want to draw your attention to are the columns, because I think that's where we really need to spend our focus. What makes a URA project worthy? If it's a project that creates jobs, if it's a project that adds to the property tax base, if it brings outside money into the valley, if it reduces blight, we felt all those things were important for a URA project, and we weighted them accordingly. Where we really need the City Council's opinion or critique is on those criteria. Is it worth reinvesting in our community? If it is, do we have the right criteria for addressing, looking at a project within these That's what we would like to invite you to do, is to plan a work session where you review the criteria. Focus there first. The projects or the rows can follow. If you believe that planned growth can benefit us all, industry located in industrial areas with appropriate infrastructure, commercial corridors laid out with appropriate infrastructure, community amenities such as parks and ballfields in kid-friendly areas, safe areas, and that there can be synergy when the public entities work together to achieve a common goal, then we, your Urban Renewal Agency, invite you to guide us in our mission to promote long-term economic development, create jobs, and improve the tax base by critically looking at the criteria that we are evaluating, whether a job, whether a project is worthy of URA Joe Hewlett will be up next, he's the other at-large member.
Although you've heard from me before, I just wanted to reiterate my hope that you will support the URA and its mission to promote community growth and development. As you've heard tonight, using our evaluation tool, we've narrowed the long original list of potential projects to a manageable shortlist, a relative handful that promise substantial benefits in the form of job creation, increased property tax base, and reduced deterioration or blight. I understand that there was resistance to the revised plan, but this is not unexpected. In conjunction with the airport's upcoming 70th anniversary, I've been studying its history a bit, and I've learned, among other things, that the citizens of Lewiston in the early 1960s gave a very cool reception to the creation of a new runway that would accommodate jet aircraft at the airport. And of course, today, we couldn't imagine being without that runway. I'm told that the Brighton Canyon Road project initially faced stiff opposition, as did, of course, the new library. Both of these projects, I think it's fair to say, have gained broad acceptance. And perhaps most interestingly, the objection to the new projects today comes in spite of the success by any number of majors of the North Lewiston-Nesburst Terrace and Downtown projects. The projects on the list before you have a similarly strong potential for success. For all but one of those projects, the URA would seek a partner, either a developer, another governmental entity, or both, creating a valuable, a valuable community synergy. You must decide then whether the dividend from the earlier projects should be reinvested in new projects to promote continued growth and development, or be returned to the budgets of the taxing entities to help satisfy their more immediate needs. To my way of thinking, this boils down to a choice between near-term expediency and long-term possibilities. The City Council has shown itself to be forward-looking, and I hope that that will be borne out as you vote on the revised plan this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
We've heard quite a bit of testimony tonight. If this is the appropriate time, I could provide any additional information you may like. Hopefully, I have it, can answer any questions. We also have the agency attorney in the audience, Mr. Roberts, who could provide any information you shall need. Just to note that earlier this week, or last week, we had circulated a memo he had prepared that addressed two issues that seem to crop up on a regular basis. And he could explain that further if you need to.
Counsel, have any questions for Laura? Counselor Daniel?
On page 24 of the binder, most of the way down, it's talking, it's in regards to the Twin City Foods site.
Yes, sir.
There's a part in there that says estimated cost to subsidized development is up to 2.5 million. And I was curious, what is that going to be?
All right. I believe that the term is incentivize, and that's what we're looking at. And we've considered a number of things at the staff level. For example, we have improved the first and fifth corridors in terms of trying to provide a front door to the project, but in terms of a real good access, we probably need to improve Beechey, which connects first and fifth, and it's also on the south side of the property. There's a graphic from the Downtown Circulation Plan that has been previously circulated that shows a road section with Beechey having diagonal parking on both sides. So that certainly is a possibility. The property is crisscrossed by three-phase power, above head power, which Avista is willing to eliminate, except that there are four services off that power that would need to be taken care of, including the Corps of Engineers bathroom, the Corps of Engineers interpretive center, a wellhouse, and then, you know, one other utility-type function. So it may be that we can get the power lines dropped for free, but those other services would need to be dealt with. Those are just two examples that would come up. Another example would be taking a look at the alignment of the Levy Bypass Road with the interest of maybe having it move a little bit to the east and come down and line up with First, which would allow a more natural movement from the Blue Bridge north into downtown, instead of requiring the loop-de-loop on the one-way into Clarkston and forcing the through-traffic on Main Street, which is not desired by the Main Street community. It would be better if we had a more intuitive circulation pattern that would take that through-traffic and put them on to the bypass. So these things are actively being developed and worked on, but what we're hoping for is not to make those choices in a vacuum, but instead to work with somebody who has an active idea for the property, and see how best we can make that work.
Counselor Daniel?
So on the same topic, it says redevelopment of the site needs to take advantage of the waterfront and be inviting to residents and visitors. Is that saying that we wouldn't allow a manufacturer to move in? Would we allow another Twin City Foods to open up there?
The existing zoning would not facilitate manufacturing.
Yeah, it's been changed. Oh, Counsel Blakey?
Just a point of clarification here, in some of the early citizens' comments, I'm hearing some, we're blending two terms, one of these two projects into one project. It sounds like we have an incubator project, a building of an incubator building, and at the same time, though, we have a food processing center. One can happen without the other, but the food processing center can't happen without the incubator building, or some other building being built. So it's important that we, in the presentations, that we separate those two terminologies. We kind of blended it in and called it the incubator building. We are, they are two separate, they are two separate projects. Keep that in mind.
If I may, Laura, my problem with the Twin City Foods site is it hasn't sold for a reason. One of the reasons is probably too expensive per square foot for what it's really worth.
I've heard that from a number of people. It's out of market range.
And I'm going to follow it up with, I've got a very good friend in the title business, and I don't think there's very many title companies that want to touch that with the railroad right-of-way going through there. Because the railroad wants to keep that line open, and I think that would really limit development.
I'm not sure that the council is aware, but there have been some title actions that have gone through the court system that address who owns what between Twin City Foods, the railroad, ITD, and the Corps. There has been resolution on the railroad tracks, and in fact, I can show you the parcel map where First Street now, I'm just thinking, no, it's still First, okay, went first, Beechey Capital. First Street, as it heads west and it takes that turn around Boomer's Garden, right at that turn, there's the railroad lines there. The railroad lost the right to that, or maybe never had the right for that, as expressed by the judge. So that property does belong to Twin So that property does belong to Twin City Foods, and we could find no evidence of an easement, which would have then followed the title action for the railroad to be allowed at that property.
Okay. Pro Tem Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, on page two of the plan, under the evaluation tool for Section 3, it lists public parking with the lowest priority. If I remember correctly, public parking was on the original plan. I mean, wasn't that one of the main reasons for opening that district?
Yes, actually, public parking is highly favored by many residents. The reason it has a red dot was because it doesn't leverage any other money. It would be a project that the URA would fund by themselves, because we don't have a ready partner that would come in wanting parking as a standalone activity.
On page 28 and 29, are these word art pictures really part of the plan, or are they just in here?
They're part of the narrative to describe a story that speaks to the benefits of long-term investment, and people key into different things in their learning and understanding process. Some people are, you know, audio, and some people like to read, and some like word stories, and that was the point. We were trying to help it be comprehensible to people, no matter how they like to learn.
You don't see it as misleading at all?
No, but again, the URA has developed this plan for the city council. If that's something you don't like, motion, vote, pull it out. You know, that's your prerogative.
Counselor Randall, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Counselor Collins?
No, I don't have anything.
Counselor Melvin Mullen?
Not at the time.
Okay. Well, don't go very far. I guess we'll take some comment. Thanks for the presentation, Laura, and Joanne and Mr. Hewlett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, for allowing me to comment on this. As I said, I handed out the letter from the county clerk, Patty Weeks, and just so the audience maybe wants to follow along, does that, and it doesn't show up real good. I thought maybe I'd read it so the audience understood what she said here, and then, once again, I apologize on her behalf for not being able, for her not being able to be here. "Hi, I'm Patty Weeks, your Nesburge County Auditor. Forgive me for not being here in person. On behalf of the Nesburge County, I urge the city council to close the North Lewiston revenue allocation area and the Nesburge Terrace since the debt has been completely retired. These two projects are a badge of honor for the city of Lewiston and the URA. Now that the URA Board has experienced success, they can use that to recreate more successful projects from the ground up. We hope that the city of Lewiston will not only recognize this, but close the two areas and reset the tax base, because the URA Board has the expertise to have a high rate of return in their investment. Closing these two areas has a large financial impact. It would put around $61 million of new construction value into the tax rolls for the county and the city, too, which translates to $592,614 for the city and $297,397 for the county in extra revenue." I usually round those numbers, but these dang auditors, you know, they want to have everything to the dollar. "Extra revenue to assist with meeting critical needs." See the handout, which is attached, and I'll put this up here, too, just make a couple notes on it. "Remember, new money would generate, would be generated to pay for new projects as new businesses come in and values increase. I would urge you to open new allocation areas and borrow the money at historically low interest rates to finance your prioritized list of improvements. The same success that has been seen can be recreated again and again with the new revenue stream it will generate. Be confident that your proposed projects will generate this revenue and not have to rely on current revenue to fund these projects." As you can see, Ms. Weeks has put this together, and I just want to, it's separated between the city and the county, and what the levy rates would be with the closure, and how much savings there would be between the two taxing entities, and what kind of reduction people could experience in a per 100,000 taxable value. As you can see on that sheet, citizens of Lewiston would experience more than $32 tax reduction, and the county residents more than $10, and I'll let you read the rest of that. I'm going to hand this copy to the Tribune here. Thank you for that opportunity to speak for Ms. Weeks. I had a couple of comments I wanted to say, but before I started on to that, a few comments that were just mentioned. URA has been very successful, and it's a good economic tool, and the county has always said that. What I don't hear a lot of, because it's targeted for promoting job growth, eliminating blight, and economic, increasing economic development, what you don't hear in this plan is the more specifics about the jobs. Where we have this attitude now, we'll build it and they will come kind of attitude. Show me in the plan where it identifies one job, just one. We're going to spend a million dollars and we can't identify one job. The projects that are being identified are repairing city roads out in the Port District that the city is responsible for, already collecting tax dollars to repair city roads, they just haven't been used out there. So now we're going to take more citizen money to use on the roads. You know, I respect people that want to serve on committees as volunteers, citizen representatives. It takes time, you don't get paid very much, if nothing, and take a little criticism, but I want to make a couple of points here on some comments I heard from our citizen representatives, and I have supported both of their appointments to the URA Board. First off, citizen representatives don't represent the taxpayers. They never have. Taxpayers are represented through elections. You vote for the people you want to represent you. Mr. Hewlett was right, there, you know, some resistance to the plan because of its lack of some information. The county has shown resistance. I'm not sure that's a good word. We actually oppose it for a number of different reasons. I don't know if I would compare URA resistance to the airport or Brighton Canyon. This is a different type economic tool. I'd mostly just compare it to anything that involves change. People, you know, are some resistance to change, so you could maybe say that. I'm not sure what our, while we think URA has been successful, it'd be nice to identify the successes. I'd like to hear people actually say what those successes are, because I'm not sure the council actually understands. I'm not even sure the council even really understands this plan, to tell you the truth, or the history of URA, or where the money comes from. I take a little bit of offense to this idea of the county needing the money or closure so we can need the money for immediate needs. It's been referred to in the past as a short-term thinking. The county will do without the money. I mean, we'll, we'll find a way to make our, make ends meet. It's a question of doing what's right. It's a question about what we told the taxpayers back in '05. It's a question of following through what's morally right. I'm glad to see you ask a question about the Twin City Foods site, because I think that's a very questionable investment, so. I wanted to make mention to a couple of other things, there's a, that the audience doesn't know about, and it's been mentioned here. This is a letter that Mr. Roberts did send out. He is the current representative for the, or legal counsel for the URA Board. He'll be retiring at the end of the year, and I guess he's not going to put it up there anymore, so, maybe it's not even there. You know, Mr. Roberts is a fine man, and good at his profession, and highly respected, too, but not infallible. Nobody's perfect, and even Mr. Roberts. So, I mean, if legal was always perfect, we wouldn't have courts. I shouldn't have to remind you about the stormwater money that had to be refunded to the taxpayer, the golf course improvement system, water system that had to be done. Am I on time limit?
No, we're talking about the URA.
Yeah, I know we are, and I'm talking about the credibility of letters that you get. I know you have a lot of letters, too, and, you know, I know you've been inundated with letters. You got a letter from the McCanns. I actually had Mr. McCann come visit me. But once again, couldn't identify a single project if that road were put through, a single business that would come there. Blamed it on a bad economy. So we're building a road that does not pay taxes. Roads don't pay taxes without a viable employer on the hook. And we're utilizing a 14-year-old traffic study to tell us we don't have to improve Gun Club Road. You know, I refer to minutes a lot, because people say that, oh, there's misinformation out there, and, you know, that's not true, and so I go back and read the minutes, and the minutes don't talk about a concern that we should pay these projects off early, and so we're going to save interest payments. Back in '05, they didn't talk about that. What they talked about was the concern of revenues being diverted from the taxing entities that now the taxing entities were going to have to raise taxes to make up for. That's what they talked about, and that's where their concern was, paying these off early. Not about saving money. That started a few years ago, when the payment dates were getting close to being, to being I know you got a letter from Mr. Hewlett that he is referred to, and, you know, there's been a couple of articles in the media, too. The media's been a little bit slow to keep up on urban renewal. Clue TV doesn't even come to the meetings really anymore, and the Tribune comes about 50% of the time, and so the public is not getting all the information that's discussed at our meetings. And because of that, thankfully, few citizens come to the meeting. I'm glad to see so many people come up here and speak now, even if you're for or against, you know, it doesn't really matter, because most of the people don't come to the urban renewal meeting. They're here tonight because of votes being taken. So there's been a couple of comments about, you know, the port projects out there, and an interview was actually done about how there's no money out there, that urban renewal money has to be used. And yet, when I read these interviews, the chairman of the port says that we don't have enough money out there right now to pay for these projects, and yet, the manager of the port says, well, we have $5 million, but those dollars won't go far, because we need that money to do upgrades at the Harry Wall Industrial Park. So why are we even considering that? That's Portland, that's why they levy taxes. And Mr. Mayor, you actually said the URA was a taxing entity. That's not correct. We can't, URA can't levy taxes.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you summarize quickly?
Okay. You know what this, this really is more akin to, and that's revenue diversion, and Mr. Blakely probably knows a little about this in terms of, you know, his business life, but when you...
Hey, whoa, timeout. Timeout!
It sounds like a financial term.
Timeout! Leave me, why do you do this in the meetings? A few weeks ago, it was pick on Bob. Now you went after the attorney, and now you just pull my business into your conversation. It's the mayor's job to keep you under control. You are out of control.
Okay.
I thought I was in control.
Okay.
I'm just making reference, it's a financial term. That's all I'm making reference to. Isn't that a financial term?
Yeah.
Perhaps it may be, Mr. Havens, please.
Revenue diversion. Actually, you know what? I apologize. It should be risk diversion. That's the term I want. That's the term I want. It's trying to lessen your risk by use, you know, bringing in partners. That's the term, so I apologize. That's the term I want, risk diversion. So by bringing on partners or other monies in some way, you don't have to use your money or as much of your money. So if we help fund 50% of a road, that's 50% the developer doesn't have to use. If we fund projects for another taxing entity, that's money they don't have to use, even though they get to levy taxes. So I'll leave it at that, but I do want you to consider that, because the people, I mean, it's tax-heavy here, and we got another budget coming up, and I think you're going to hear about it. My recommendation is that you, is that you accept the successes urban renewal has, collect on this 12-to-1 ratio that everybody's talking about, close the revenue allocation areas, reopen them again with viable projects, change the boundaries of the Nesburge Terrace to include Gun Club Road. Now your improvements are funded, too, because I've told you before, the county can't afford that. So that would be my, my recommendation. I hope you consider that.
Thank you.
My name's Don Roberts. I live at 2111 First Street here in Lewiston, and I'm sure glad that Mr. Havens came to explain to you that I was not infallible and reminded me of a particularly painful part of my professional life in the Lewiston stormwater case. But I do know one thing. I know that the county filed a lawsuit against the Urban Renewal Agency and the city, trying to convince the judge that the urban, the existing urban renewal plan required the closure of two revenue allocation areas. And regardless of my opinion on that, and I didn't represent the Urban Renewal Agency or the city in that case, the judge said that the current plan did not require us to close those two revenue allocation areas. So I just want to point that out for the council. Has nothing to do with my fallibility or my legal opinion. Mr. Havens had a problem with that, he has a problem with Judge Griffin and not with me.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Blakely.
I bet you're waiting for this. Two comments that I need to, I feel I have to make on Mr. Havens' presentation. First of all, I do believe, having, serving on the URA, I do believe Joanne and Joe do represent the best of the public's interest. When Joe was first brought before this, before the city council as a nomination, I voted against him. Mistake on my part, and I've said that publicly more than once now, but there were plenty of people that came up and spoke in favor of him. So to say he doesn't represent the public is a very unfair statement, Mr. Havens, because the public was here who spoke up for him, and they convinced the city council, over my no vote, to vote for him. So to say there is no representation by the public, and he doesn't represent the public, say what you may, you don't. I feel that maybe you don't represent your constituents. Now, second comment is the letter here that was presented to us on behalf of Patty Weeks. I am confused on the second paragraph, and I know there are two commissioners here right now. On behalf of Nesburge County, does she speak for the, is she now speaking in behalf or for the commissioners? Does she represent the commissioners and the feeling of all three commissioners? Because at no time have I actually seen a vote or a decision made by the county commissioners on their, their exact position on the URA. We've heard tibbits, we've heard testimony, we've heard... We've heard Tibbetts, we've heard testimony, we've heard, and on one commissioner, we've heard nothing from. But now, we have a representative who says, on behalf of Nesburst County. I feel that possibly, some of the county commissioners may not feel the way that this letter is. So, I think, as a county commissioner, you may want to go back and talk to this representative and say, you weren't actually in a position to represent us, or you're not representing us as we totally feel. So, question on that.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel?
I don't, you know, I don't know if, you know, if she's representing the county, but on this, it says that she's on behalf of Nesburst County, so I'm not going to question that, but she is the county auditor, and I do think, I do hold her opinion in high regards, as I'm sure you do as well.
I do.
But I would remind you that the county did take us to court, so I'm assuming that most of the county commission, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out the thing.
Simple yes or no, Mr. Tibbetts?
Can I address it? I'm Bob Tibbetts, Chairman of the Nesburst County Commission. Patty is an elected official, so Patty can get up here and speak on her position as the auditor. At a meeting one time, we discussed, it was, you were going to have this discussion at another meeting, and none of us could make that meeting, and we asked Patty to come in to address us representing the county. So, she probably wrote that on behalf of the county at the time. So, I would say, yes, she was representing the county when she drafted up that letter. It wasn't a vote, it was just a discussion, and so I'd say, she was asked to talk to us. And as long as I'm standing here, I want to say, we don't oppose the URA. That's not, a lot of people think we want to close the URA. That's not the case. We're 100% behind the URA, so...
Thank you, sir.
I hope that answered your question.
It does, thank you very much.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Accept a motion to read the consent. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent? Move to active? Entertain a motion to read the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Calls in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the minutes of the June 16, 2014, Joint City-Nesburst County Meeting. Accepting the minutes of the June 11, 2014, Planning and Zoning Commission. Approving the first reading of Ordinance 4606 by title only. An ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZC 0114, declaring that certain real property be removed from the Normal Hill North Zone, NHN, and included in a local commercial zone, and that the comprehensive plan be amended to redesignate that certain real property from high-density residential to commercial, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston, and providing an effective date. Approving the first reading of Ordinance 4609 by title only. An ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZC 0314, declaring that certain real property be removed from the suburban residential zone R1, and included in the community commercial zone C3, and that the comprehensive plan map be amended to designate that certain real property from suburban residential to commercial, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston, and providing an effective date. Approving the first reading of Ordinance 4610 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston repealing Lewiston City Code, Section 24-3, and providing an effective date. Approving the vouchers payable for June 6, 2014, through June 19, 2014, minus Albertson's and Lewis Kirk State College, in the amount of $1,932,248.17, and June 20, 2014, through July 3, 2014, in the amount of $1,167,573.49.
Okay, counselors, the consent agenda's been read. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Before we get onto the active agenda, I think, how about we take a five-minute break, so everybody can air out a little bit. Still rather uncomfortable in here, so five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Council members. I'm the Chair of the Emergency Communications Joint Powers Board for the city of Lewiston and Nesburst County. A few weeks ago, we sent a letter asking for amendment to the joint powers agreement that the city council, the county commissioners, or the Nesburst County have signed. In that letter, we asked, we have an issue with updating our bylaws, and basically, this is some language to clean up that kind of inadvertent error that was in the joint powers agreement. Currently, the Paragraph 8, it reads, "Amendments will be considered valid upon written and signed notice by the county and city governing bodies," basically making it so we'd have to get approval to change our bylaws. And Mr. Creason, our attorney for the Emergency Communications Joint Powers Board, has suggested this language. Amendments to the bylaws will be considered valid upon written and signed notice to the county and city governing bodies, and then proposed amendments to the joint powers agreement will not be valid until approved by each of the governing bodies that are parties to agreement. So, the agreement would still be underneath the city and the county for any amendments to the agreement, which we are asking for here, and the bylaws would be handled at the, at the joint powers board level, and then we'd just give notice when those were, when those occurred. Is there any questions, or...
Any questions, Mr. Reynolds? Okay. Anything to add, Mr. Bennett?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. So, we need to read, or just take a vote? Okay?
We would just need a motion to approve the amendment to the joint powers agreement.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment of the Emergency Communications Joint Powers Board bylaws.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Bill. Okay, next up, Ordinance 4607, third reading and possible adoption. Amending the urban renewal plan for the North Lewiston Tax Revenue Allocation Area, the Nesburst Terrace Tax Revenue Allocation Area, and the Downtown Lewiston Tax Revenue Allocation Area. I'll entertain a motion to read, Ordinance 4603, for the third time.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Can't both move? Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries five to two. To read.
Approving the third reading of Ordinance 4607 by title only, suspending the rules. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewiston, Idaho, amending the urban renewal plan for the North Lewiston Tax Revenue Allocation Area, the Nesburst Terrace Tax Revenue Allocation Area, and the Downtown Lewiston Tax Revenue Allocation Area. Authorizing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this ordinance and other required information to Nesburst County and other officials. Providing for a limitation on actions against the amended plan after 30 days from the effective date of the ordinance. Providing for a waiver of the reading rules, reading of the rules, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Okay, counselors, Ordinance 4607 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve, Ordinance 4607.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Well, I went to some of the, oh, well, I went to a URA meeting concerning the, in particular, the Nesburst Terrace Tax Revenue Allocation Area. And what I brought to the URA was the Resolution 2000-08. And basically, what it said was that they were planning a planned unit development. And in that planned unit development, they wanted a traffic study, and in that traffic, from that traffic study, they were going to determine what roads and stuff that the developer was going to have to put in. Then, after this PUD was developed, the urban renewal area was started, and when it got started, it was being started because of the Nesburst Terrace area. And the project that was in the urban renewal plan was specifically for the area above the Nessprish Drive. So, in other words, the URA was going to develop area above the URA, or above the Nessprish Drive, and not at Nessprish Drive. So, that's one bone of contention I have with the urban renewal plan. And then, the other one is, I've got some concern about the purchase of property by the URA for, I know it's legal, it can be done according to the URA statutes, it's allowed. But I have a real problem, the government buying more property down at the former Twin City Foods property. Again, as far as I'm concerned, it's taking private property off of the tax rolls, and it's just causing us to get less and less money. Every time we turn around, we've got another building or property being bought up by the city government downtown. And so, it's actually taking away from the tax base downtown and shoving the responsibility up to the people in the orchards. And I'm thinking, some of those people are probably getting a little bit upset about that. And then, the downtown, that's part of the downtown. I'm all for downtown allocation area, working on the infrastructure, particularly the water lines and the sewer lines and the streets. I don't have a problem with that. But buying that property, I have a problem with. North Lewiston, I don't have a problem with us working on the roads in North Lewiston. Those roads have been there before the port was even there. Those, so, it isn't that the roads were put in when the port was put in. Those roads were put in there before by the city. So, it's our responsibility to take care of them. And if it means that we can use the urban renewal to do it, that's fine. Let's go ahead and undo that. But overall, as far as the URA is concerned, they've done a lot of work. They've brought it down from twenty-four wish list projects down to eight, and they've gone through a long process. It's been open to the public to make comments, as we've seen here tonight. And so, I would be in support of the URA Plan Two.
Counselor Collins?
I'll voice that, at this point in time, that I am in support of keeping these URAs as they are and with the list that we've been provided. I know that my concerns primarily were with the potential of a piece of, a building actually being built. And part of that has to do with the fact that initially, in coming on to council, we dealt with issues with property owned, or building owned by the city on property not owned by the city, and how that created some issues as well. I really don't want to repeat that. I know that I've visited with some of the city staff about, in 2029, when these are closed, if they haven't closed sooner, what, where, and how is that building going to be taken care of? Who's going to be responsible for it? I think I've had those questions answered sufficiently, at least to my comfort level. But I'm in support of the ordinance as written.
Okay. Counselor Daniel? Who am I?
So, one of the comments I've heard many times from many different people was, is if we close these down, if we close the two districts down, that it's short-term thinking. But it's not short-term thinking. It's $600,000. If it was a one-time deal, then yeah, then it would be a short-term thinking. But in this case, it'd be $600,000 that would become part of our base budget. The majority of the city council, earlier today, approved putting the budget out for next year to be a 4.8% tax increase, something that could be avoided if we closed down the districts, reset the base, and then we could reopen the areas and look for other projects, such as the ones listed in here. That's all I'll say for now.
Okay. Phil Thompson?
My main concern with the plan continues to be the issues of legality and illegality perception. You know, whether it's legal or illegal, the courts can decide it, but there's been so many allegations of trust revolving around the URA that morally, I can't support it. And, you know, I agree with Counselor Daniel, you know, there's over half a million dollars here that we could be appropriating to our streets. And we just heard a presentation today when we went over our budget about how the streets are in dire need and a crisis, and, but yet, we want to raise foregone taxes in order to get the streets repaired, and all we have to do is simply close down these two districts, and we can repair the roads. So, I'm not at all in support of this plan.
Okay. Counselor Blakey?
I'm on record of support of the plan, but I, on one point that Counselor Randall brought up, I am supportive of one of his stances. As a member of the URA, as a member of the URA, it's important, we need to keep in mind that, I'm right now not in favor of buying the property down at Twin City Foods. If the wording that we're using now, and we've discussed this a lot, that we're not in a position to buy that. We're in a position to possibly incentivize it, which would mean if the right buyer came along who wanted the project, wanted the property, we could then help them with the infrastructure surrounding it, be it access, be it, as Laura said, taking down power lines, replacing power lines. But if it came right down to a JED, that we were, it came to a vote in that committee to buy the land, I would vote against it, and I side with you on that. I don't want to be in the, I don't want to be in a position of owning that piece of property. I'd like to be in a position, I think the URA should be in a position, to facilitate somebody buying that property and keeping it on the tax rolls, obviously keeping it on the tax rolls. And that's a big deal. And I agree with you on that point.
Counselor Melton Rado?
Well, you know, I think the URA has put hours and hours into this plan, and I think, you know, we did get stacks of papers that probably weren't as organized as I would have liked, and we got this nice binder with tabs and all that. I really think this URA comes down to what your vision of Lewiston is. To me, I think we need to take advantage of an economic tool that, you know, a city is actually provided with, and that's what the URA is. To me, I feel like people are going to want to come to our city to go to a convention center rather than come and stare at our roads. So, I think the URA is going to help us get there, and I think that's why I am in support of this URA.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna go out on a limb. I've said, at this time, I'm not really in favor of closing the areas, but as I look at the list of projects and stuff, I mean, there's two that I can, that I think are viable projects. Now, regardless of the level of commitment, contribution, what have you, I do think having an east-west corridor constructed will benefit the city in the long term. I understand that the McCanns don't have anybody online to build a new building or provide one more job right at the moment, but if this is a way that we can use a little bit of leverage to get another east-west corridor, I think we would be wise to pursue it. I'm not saying it has to be funded anytime soon. The other one, I spent time last week cleaning up after the last raft trip, because all the garbage seems to end up at my house. So, of course, we had a fair amount of aluminum that needed to be recycled. I went down to Pacific, recycled the cans, had to go up to the dump, and kind of made the loop around north of Lewiston. And Eighteenth Street needs to be fixed. I gotta believe that it's not just the city and the URA, but I gotta believe that there would be some buy-in from the major haulers that are in there. Mr. Lyons was here, I know he's not here anymore. I think the port's probably got a little bit of money, they could probably kick in to help kickstart it. The, we've got XL, I don't know if anybody's talked to Bill Stellman at XL, but making that public-private partnership, Swift is out there. Those are the guys that are impacting the roads. I think if we showed them some effort to rebuild it, and I think the sticker price on that one was about, you know, eight hundred and change, is it time to do it? Why not? That can be paid off. Eight hundred thousand in Area One, be paid off in three years, maybe?
Yes.
You know, I mean, and that's it. I'm not nuts about the Harrowell North, I think that's more of the port's responsibility, as it were. The incubator, I've got a problem with that. They're gonna have a vacant incubator building as it is fairly soon when the winery finally gets up and going and moves out, unless they've got somebody already moving in. But that's, you know, the public parking downtown, to me, my years on planning and zoning, and six years on the council, we have had, in my experience, three parking studies downtown, and there is available parking. It's just not that parking spot that you want right in front of the place that you're, you want to go eat lunch at. There's plenty of parking down there. And I thought it was interesting on that, there was an article in the paper not too long ago about the walking distance at the Walmart parking lot to their front door from various areas out in the parking lot at Walmart. So, and again, the Twin City Foods site, to me, would it be nice if we had just wheelbarrows full of cash to buy it? Yeah, that way, we could sure it's, you know, development that'll be conducive with a confluence setting to attract people, but I don't think that's necessarily our place or the URA's place. The complete street's part of the other downtown infrastructure. I mean, since the revenue area three is still open, that's the biggie, and that's the one that some council's gonna have to deal with at some point in time. Current dollars, estimate fifteen million dollars to rebuild Main Street. There's no way that could be paid off by 2029. You know, there's gonna have to be some other foreign sources coming into that, but that is gonna, it's gonna need to be done. So, I mean, that being said, I'm not, I'm not in favor of closing them down just yet. Those are the two projects I could get behind, provided there's a strong financial commitment from the private sector. Other than that, here's some further comments. Maybe I gave somebody food for thought.
Counselor Daniel?
Counselor Maldonado mentioned the convention center, and I've heard that several different times. Is that actually in the plan, that we're gonna build a convention center?
I don't.
No, ma'am. No, sir.
Somebody could.
But with the URA, it's, we can incentivize to bring a convention center without it. It obviously hasn't done anything yet, so with the incentivization of this area, it'll help.
Again, I just, having talked to several real estate people, I just think the price is too high right now, comparative to what else is available out there. I mean, the, let's face it, we've got a, what's the term, Laura? Moribund mall up on Brighton? That's a good, that's a good planning and zoning term, moribund. And it looks moribund. It is going to auction for 1.2 million dollars. That's probably what it's worth. My opinion, that's probably about what the property down at Twin City Foods is. Of course, there is a well there. Wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing for the city to have, but unfortunately, the developer, the owners down there aren't willing to cut loose with that little chunk of their property. So, that, in my opinion, would have been a wise use of funding, so. Further comments?
Yeah. I hear. Counselor Daniel?
I just want to reiterate what I had mentioned before about the 600,000. Just, I want the public to keep in mind, here in a few months, or even next year, or even the year after that, when a council member says, well, we've cut, we've cut everywhere we could cut. Where's the, you know, if you want to, if you want to not raise taxes, you give us an idea of where to cut. Well, we don't even have to cut anything. We can fund some of the projects that are actually in this plan by just closing the districts and moving forward, resetting the base, allowing the URA to reopen those areas, and they could go after those projects as well.
Counselor Blakey?
I just want to echo a comment that Mr. Doringsville made in his presentation, is we don't want to lose sight of the, of the big picture of what a URA may do for the City of Lewiston. If I knew where we were gonna be two years from now, if I knew what was coming two years from now, I'd buy land right next to it. And I don't. And so, there are opportunities out there that we don't know about at this point in time, and it's good to have a tool such as what we have here to possibly facilitate something that may be outside of our list at this point in time. And I think it's, and I agree with you on a lot of points, there are items on this list that, it's a list. There are some that are, I think, are very important to the City of Lewiston, and some that we may never, ever get to, because they won't, they will not pan out as far as dollars. But there's gonna be opportunity that's gonna come to the City of Lewiston down the road that we don't know yet, and it's good to be prepared to help that opportunity grow.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve Ordinance 4607. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion, is that?
See, yes.
Ayes?
All the ayes.
Motion carries, five to two. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next up, Ordinance 4609, Second and Third Readings and Adoption, Possible Adoption, Implementing the Council's Decision in ZCO 3-14, Declaring That Certain Real Property Be Removed From the Suburban Residential Zone R1 and Included in the Community. Community. There is a typo there. I sent you that, Carrie. Community Commercial Zone C3, Applicant Judd and Bassel. I'll entertain a motion to read second time, or can we read them both at the same time? Same time? I'll entertain a motion to have the second and third readings of Ordinance 4609.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries, six to one.
Approving the Second Reading of Ordinance 4609 by Title Only, an ordinance implementing the City Council's Decision in ZCO 314, declaring that certain real property be removed from the suburban residential zone R1 and included in the community commercial zone C3, and that the comprehensive plan map be amended to designate that certain real property from suburban residential to commercial, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Lewiston and providing an effective date. Approving the Third Reading of Ordinance 4609 by Title Only Suspending the Rules, an ordinance implementing the City Council's Decision in ZCO 314, declaring that certain real property be removed from the suburban residential zone R1 and included in the community commercial zone C3, and that the comprehensive plan map be amended to designate that certain real property from suburban residential to commercial, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, Ordinance 4609 has been read for the second and third times. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 4609.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Randall?
The only reason I'm gonna vote against it is I'm against having the first, second, and third readings all in one night. So, I have to, a reason I'm voting against it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Blakey?
I should know why, but why are we reading them all in one night?
That was a decision, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that the council made when it came up for public hearing. There wasn't any opposition to it, and it was a project that they wanted to get started on during construction season, as I understand it, so they can...
The Judds were running out of room in their parking lot.
Yeah. There was no opposition, I think, either at the Planning Commission or here, so.
Okay, so, all those in favor approving Ordinance 4609, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries, six to one. Next up, vouchers payable to Albertsons in the amount of $94.07. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Albertsons.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries, six to one, with Counselor Daniel abstaining. And then, we have Item E, which is not on the agenda, vouchers payable to Lewis Clark State College in the amount of $2,481. Is that on the button? Okay? For an air conditioner? So, it's a joke.
It's a joke. Joke, sorry. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to LCSC with Counselor Collins abstaining.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero with Counselor Collins abstaining. Okay, on to unfinished new business, city council comments. Do we have any this evening? Councilors? It is rather toasty in this room. I'll break the ice, so to speak. Be nice if we can consult with our landlords and see if they could cut some refrigeration on for the next meeting. We're going to have three meetings in August. It doesn't get any cooler. I'll give them a call. Okay. The other thing I'd like to say, and I really, I would like to thank everybody for coming and testifying. We had a real diverse group of people, and there are some passionate ideas about urban renewal. I just want to remind everybody, we approve this, okay? The Plan Two. Should we choose in a month, when we really get to the nuts and bolts of the budget session, we hold the keys to this. This area, either one of those areas, can be closed down with the vote of the council. So just keep that in mind. I mean, this is not the be-all or end-all. I think we've given us some, we've all expressed our opinions on what they've had going on. I do think they've been a valuable economic force in town that wouldn't be near the development in North Lewiston had that water project not gotten approved. And I would really like to see their work on maybe recruiting some of the businesses out there if they indeed want to go through with the Eighteenth Street reconstruction. I got to believe that they might get some buy-in from some of the businesses that will be directly impacted, which will reduce that, and get a new street out of the deal, have it closed out, you know, in two, three years. So, but I do appreciate, I want you all to know, I do appreciate, even though we didn't come to a hundred percent agreement, that, appreciate everybody's comments, and it was good discussion, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can I remind you? You can change your idea on the plan. It's, would be an amendment to the plan. It requires the same kind of process you just went through.
Okay.
Just to let you know.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Bennett?
Just to note that we had a very successful event earlier this week. We had former Lieutenant Governor David Leroy here in Lewiston to help to celebrate the grand opening, if you will, of the first territorial capital building. And he made an appearance in costume as the original first territorial governor, William Wallace, and then proceeded to the Capitol Center itself to bestow upon the center some artifacts from the Lincoln era that were associated with the Capitol. Mr. Leroy is one of the preeminent Lincoln collectors in the United States. And so it was very generous of him to do that and to provide, you know, those archives and those additional items for the historical preservation here in Lewiston.
Thank you. Yeah, to follow up on that real quick, I got a little bit of time off work, so went home, got shined up a little bit, and did have the opportunity to welcome Mr. Leroy back to town. He is a native son of Lewiston. And I kind of felt bad for him because he was wearing a very nice wool coat that you would have worn back in the eighteen fifties that came well down below his knees, and it was a hundred and three degrees, every bit of that. But he did take the time to talk to me and ask me about how Lewiston's going and how things are here in town. And I said, you know, it's great, the rain rarely hits the ground, and the skies are always blue. It's inspired meetings that we've been having, so. Anyways, he's a very gracious gentleman for providing that stuff for our community. Advisory Board and Commission appointments. Counselor Malvinato?
The Library Board has a reappointment so that they will have a quorum at their next meeting. Colleen Mahoney has emailed us, as we saw today in our emails, asking to be reappointed to the Library Board.
Okay, you making a nomination?
Yes.
Entertain a motion to nominate Colleen Mahoney as a reappointment to the Library Commission?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries seven to zero. Any other? Are we still looking for people on solid waste?
Yes, we need two people. And with the disability, we're going to be interviewing Mr. Fry.
Yes. And with Mr. Fry, if we appoint Mr. Fry to the Disabilities Advisory Commission, then there will be an opening on the Traffic Advisory Council. So keep that in mind. Work session agenda topics. I think we've got quite a few set for August.
Four set for August fourth.
Okay. Anything else anybody wants to add? Okay, well, with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody.